All right, welcome to our meeting of November 19. The first item on our agenda is to approve the supervisors' meeting about COVID-19, which you have all seen. And do I have such a role?
On the COVID?
No, we'll take them down. All votes in favor?
Huh?
I'm not allowed to vote. Because I wasn't here.
No.
All right.
I would support it.
The next one is the presentation of our 2013 preliminary budget. Lisa, you are on the hot date.
First, we're going to do the budget, and then we'll do the third quarter financials. So this budget for 2013 is the first year that represents all the special funds that have been created per the recommendation of our accountant. They are -- the main funds have been separated as the sewer and open space tax is always separated, but we've also put in the fee and lieu into the open space tax. We've also worked hard on reducing the number of categories to make sure that all minor categories are consolidated properly. So I'm going to start with the general fund. The revenue that's projected for 2013 for the general fund is 3.1 million. It's 33 percent more than 2012. It's about 4.4 percent less than what we project at the end of this year, and it's mainly due to taxes. Our expenditures are projected to be 3.2 million. It's about 46 percent higher than in 2012. And if you notice, we do have a balanced budget for the general fund. However, the revenues are 3.146 million, the expenditures are 3.26. The general fund will receive $100,000 reimbursement payment from the sewer fund next year because, as you'll see later on, the sewer fund has a loan that they owe the general fund for The major revenue items are taxes, local enabling taxes, mainly the earned income tax is a big tax, and the real estate transfer tax. The service fees, which are streetlights. And there are streetlights in there, and then there's...
Excuse me, Mike? Mike, Mr. Allen? Would you mind sharing what you're saying?
No, I wouldn't.
This is an open meeting. You're talking to Mr. Hammacher.
Correct.
The service fees are -- they include liquor license that the township receives, subdivision fees, reimbursement for engineering fees that the township has paid for developments, zoning permits, zoning hearing fees, and streetlights, as I said. And then there's emergency services, fire and police. The township is hiring another police officer next year. So that's why the police budget has gone up. The major expenses we have -- next year, we will be spending $659,000 for fire and emergency services. We'll be giving the fire companies each $160,000 for their operating costs, and then both fire companies have requested capital costs for next year. The capital expenditures are at $400,000 next year. That's for paving and for equipment. Roads and bridges, that's -- the township maintenance garage will be paved. There will be a new floor put inside the garage. And as I said about the police budget, we are hiring a new police officer next year. The other thing I wanted to mention, the township has started the process of taking over Penn's Manor development, and when that happens, the township has to pave the roads in there. And the township has agreed that they will pay to widen the back entrance to Penn's Manor because you cannot get two trucks to pass each other. So they're going to widen it and put road curbs on each side of the back entrance.
Lisa, before you go any further, under wages, you've hired another policeman. Are the wages for the policeman in the...
They're on their police.
All right.
This is just to show the quarterly variation. Certain things are spent all in one quarter. Some things are spent throughout the year, so sometimes it's not accurate as to, you know, when something was spent out of the budget. Next year, the township will repay the general fund $25,000 a quarter for the sewer loan. And then these are the special funds. We have the sewer fund, the open space fund, the library tax, state fuel capital fund, and our loan from the sewer fund and the general fund. All -- and just to note, we now include all revenues and expenditures for sewer in the sewer fund. We have eight stations in the township. And next year...
That's you.
Next year, we will have residents connecting to the sewer system, so they will have to pay connection fees. We will be extending the Creek Road pump station from -- it's almost near Grand Sasso in the borough. It will be extended from the new pump station on Creek Road down Creek Road to McFarlane Road. And then the people all along there will have to connect to the sewer system. We're also extending the sewer system up from Five Points at Schoolhouse Lane to Five Point and down Hillendale.
Lisa, before you go any further, what is the cost of those people who are required to connect to the sewer?
$7,000.
Oh, wow.
The sewer fund revenue is projected to be 1.5 million in 2013. That's due to sewer connection fees from one project in particular. They have -- they are going to pay the township $784,000 for sewer connection fees. And again, we pointed out on there that $813,000 was loaned to the sewer fund from the general fund this year. The expenditures for 2013 for the sewer fund will be approximately 1.5 million. We have it divided up in common expenses and station expenses. For next year, we're going to start -- we will have it divided up among each station, and they -- all the common expenses will be under each station.
What do you mean by common meaning station?
Common meaning borough fees, what residents pay. So for each station, such as Victoria Gardens or Rosedale Pump Station, it will be divided up as to what fees are collected for that station, what fees are paid for that station, the electric bill, the phone bill, any maintenance. The supervisors are also doing a township-wide sewer study next year. They want to see what the sewer situation is for the entire township, in particular Route 52. They're going to do door-to-door studies along Route 52. And West Hillendale Road, Falcons Lair area, they're going to do door-to-door studies there. The rest of the township, they will be doing a sewer study for, but they'll collect data from the county. They're doing this because we've had reports of many failing systems off throughout the township. And then, again, I mentioned that we're going to have the Creek Road extension and the Five Points extension next year. So this is, in summary, what the general -- what the fund will look like at the beginning of January for the sewer fund. The beginning balance is the balance now, so obviously that will change for the beginning of the year. But then you have the loan, our revenues and expenditures, and just are projected next year. Bill?
Lisa, the connection fee, is that payable in one lump sum, or is there a schedule for the residents to pay it off over a year, or two, or three?
Are you referring to the lump sum that I mentioned, the $784,000?
No, the $7,000 hookup.
Okay. Well, that depends. If a resident comes to us and asks to make payments, then we let them.
Have you established a schedule that you'll offer?
Yes, we do have a schedule we offer. We've offered it in the past for other connection fees because it is a large fee for people to pay.
Thank you.
Again, we talked about the loan to the sewer fund and that we plan to pay it back quarterly next year. We'll still have a balance at the end of next year of $712,540. This is the open space fund. The projected revenue next year is 1.4 million, and that's for open space tax and fee and lieu. The expenses next year are a total of $200,000, but they are mainly for contributions the township pays, a contribution quarterly to the K Little League, to the Kennedy Area Senior Center, Anton Nixon Park, and the Kennedy Area Park and Rec, and the Senior Center.
Hold it.
Joe?
Yes, thank you. Now, the open -- or the fee and lieu contributions, are they solely dedicated to recreation?
Yes.
So they pay for all these recreational costs?
Yes.
Do the open space funds, per se, from the tax, do they go towards recreation?
If needed, yes. They can -- the supervisors can spend it on recreation.
Okay, so that's discretionary?
Yes.
Is the fee and lieu discretionary for open space, or is it primarily dedicated to recreation?
They can spend it on either open space or recreation.
Thank you.
So this is the projected beginning balance at 2013 for the open space fund of 2.165 million, and the projected revenue is 1.384, and the projected expenses. So we're looking at a projected year-end of $3.3 million. This is the library fund. This is for the dedicated library tax that the township receives. We receive approximately $854,000 a year, and we distribute all of it to the library on a quarterly basis. This is the state fund. The revenue is projected at $232,000. The expenses are $232,000. We will be paving for $200,000 and line painting for $32,000. This is money that we receive for liquid fuels, which is for our roads, and for road turnback from the state. So we can only spend this money on road projects. We have divided up the paving and line painting in the general fund and state fund, as I showed you earlier. We will be spending a portion of the paving out of the general fund and $200,000 out of the state fund. So our total paving for 2013 will be $469,000, and our total line painting will be $32,000.
Why is the line painting going up so, almost over-doubling?
Because Roger has -- our roadmaster has more roads next year to line paint, and he plans on paving more next year.
That's double.
Yes.
So let me add one other thing to that. It's pretty much discretionary with the roadmaster. It's very possible that he might defer line painting on some roads next year, depending upon how they winter. Okay?
He did not finish all line painting this year as well, but he does have a list of roads that he will need to line paint next year. And also, not only will he line paint new roads, he needs to repaint other roads. This is the capital fund. We have created the capital fund to anticipate capital expenditures above $10,000. Again, I talked about the paving for $270,000, and then the $130,000 is for capital purchases, ones for a backhoe. The other one -- the other purchase is a bucket that will be built for when the road crew is up in trees, trimming trees. And then there'll be fuel tee pumps put on the fuel tanks of the maintenance garage. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm going to propose that we reduce our real estate tax by 2 percent next year.
This is real estate. That's just... Are you waiting for next year for you to propose that?
Before next year.
You guys discussed that?
No, we haven't. That's where it starts and ends.
So I guess they're going to discuss lowering the real estate tax. I was going to say, if that hasn't my budget solved.
What was the percentage?
He said 50 percent.
Why don't you throw the pie up about how much of the...
50 percent.
It's just for real estate, he said.
Yeah.
It's under taxes, which is $341,800.
So it's about 10 percent.
It's $154,000. We get about $308,000 a year.
You're reducing it by 150 to 210.
$154,000.
All right.
And just so you know, at the next work session, I plan to work with the supervisors on our capital fund, our sinking fund. Okay, this is the third quarter financial report. And again, we're going to have the general fund, sewer fund, open space fund, library fund, and state fuel fund. The revenue for the first nine months was $2.7 million for the general fund, which is 113 percent of the budgeted $2.4 million. The expenses have been $2.4 million, which is 100 percent of the budget. The major revenue items are taxes, and right now, we're $247,000 ahead for the first nine months for taxes. The other -- then we have the service fees, cable TV. We receive fees from Verizon and Comcast quarterly, which have increased. As people connect -- as people hook up to Verizon and Comcast, we get more fees. The shared revenue, the interest, building permits. And the other items are fines, contributions, grant money, which is for recycling, police copies, insurance. They're less than 1 percent of the revenue. The major expense items were -- the roads were $597,000 versus the budget of $689,000 for paving and line painting, oil and chip. The fire and emergency services is pretty much right on budget. And please note that the nine -- the budget is for the nine -- is for nine months, not for the entire year. Just so you're all clear on that. So the expenditures, the seven major categories are the roads, office, fire and emergency services, police expenses, general government, quarterly contributions, and engineering. Here's the quarterly comparison. Again, not all items are spent during equal quarters. Some are spent in first quarter or the last quarter. Some are spent equally. Our next steps is we're going to start -- our starting and ending balances for other special funds will be calculated. The number of categories, as I mentioned, for the budget have been consolidated to bring clarity to the finances. Quarterly budgets will be done starting in January for the categories. And then a forecast of capital expenses is being developed, as I mentioned. We're working with the supervisors on that, mainly for the sinking fund. But then also, our roadmaster has created a list of all the equipment we have, what will need to be replaced, the cost, and also a list of roads that will need to be repaved when and if there'll be oil and chips. Next, we have our sewer fund. The revenue for the first nine months was $565,000 versus the budget of $591,000. That's mainly for residential industrial user fees, so it's generated by whatever people use for the water usage because that's how we bill people for their stuff. The expenses total $955,000 versus budget of $1.1 million. 51 percent of that cost was for the pump station, operating costs. And then the beginning balance of the sewer fund was a negative $319,000. And then, as I said, the township loaned the sewer fund $813,000. The current balance in the sewer fund is $103,000. This is the open space fund. The revenue has totaled $640,000 versus the budget of $762,000. We received the open space tax all year, so we still have three months of open space tax to collect and report. The expenses total $258,000. That was for the Schmidt easement. So the net income was $382,000. And the beginning balance for the open space fund was 1.783 million. The net income is $381,808, and the ending balance for September is $2.165 million. If you recall, the township owed -- the open space fund owed the general fund $1.4 million. So we reimbursed the general fund, and then the supervisors allocated that money directly back to the open space fund at the same time. This is the library fund. We've received $48,000, and we spent $148,000 distributing it to the library. The state fund, we've received $226,000. We spent $216,000. We spent that on paving. Again, we were going to spend money on line painting. Out of that, and we didn't do the line painting. And again, we're making progress in reorganizing the financials in order to present revenues and expenditures kind of way.
Sorry, Lisa, there... Well, quite quick enough. So you didn't spend the money on line painting. Do you forego that money?
No. It remains in our state fund.
You just have it staying?
Yes.
It's in the web.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions? Bill?
Looking at the budgets and expenditures that was on the web, is it about right that the general fund revenue for the year is going to exceed expenses by maybe a half a million dollars? No?
No. If you -- if you look at the financial statement online, that includes expenditures in there for sewer that have been put into the sewer fund on the presentation, and that's why we loaned the -- we loaned the sewer fund the money because the sewer -- if you look at the financial statement, there's about $500,000 in expenditures for the sewer fund on the financial statement. And that money has to be reimbursed from the sewer fund. So it will show this year on the financial statement, but as of next year, there won't be any sewer expenses or revenue in the general fund. But no, it will not.
What do you anticipate our total cash will be at the end of the year, which is invested with, as I understand, two or three, three or four banks? What are we looking at?
At the end of the year, close to $11 million. And that's what the supervisors are going to take approximately half of that and put it into a sinking fund.
Good.
Okay, Lisa? Thank you very much. Is there any more? If anybody wants to ask, please sit, whilst you're standing up here. Okay. You'll come back. Okay, Lisa, you're still on the document.
I put on the website the business advisory committee proposal. This proposal has been worked on by Bill McLaughlin, John Hadrick, Matt Sabo, Jim Keith Wells. I can't say his last name.
Yeah. Keith Wells.
Yes. Bob Listerman and Jim Clymer. And it's a -- it's a committee that will be here to guide the township and offer any assistance to myself and the supervisors for financial reporting, budget process, accounting, fund management and creation, policy development, capital expenditure analysis, and assistance in implementing audit and recommendations. So they've worked on this policy. Supervisors have all agreed on the policy. So we put it up on the website so that anybody wants to get comments on it, you can over the next month. The supervisors do plan to adopt it in December, and they will look for residents to be on the committee. They will be looking for three residents that have financial backgrounds to be on the committee, and I will be on the committee. And then the supervisors can sit in as they wish. So again, it's on the website. Any input you have, please email it to me. And then they will point the members in January at their organizational meeting.
Lisa, can I just throw in here, although you've announced that we're going to adopt this, and I'm very pleased because this was a great concern of mine from the very beginning of my administration. But the fact that we are positive in going forward with this does not mean that it is, at this point, a work in stone. And so I would strongly encourage the residents to look at it and review it and give us any comments that you may have. If it's a problem to get on the website, be in touch with any of us, and certainly with me, and I'd be glad to give you copy of it so that you have a chance to look at it. Input is very important so that when we do adopt it finally, that it will be most effective to the concerns that the residents have.
I wanted to give an update on property violations. As some of you know, we enacted a property violations process back in the year, and it's to address a lot of properties around the township, whether they have signs up or trash, abandoned vehicles, their, you know, houses falling down. Since then, we've enforced approximately 55 violations, and 90 percent of those violations have been addressed. We still have a few that we're working on. People come in almost daily and fill out a violation form for somebody's property. So it's -- they're, you know, quite active. There is a house that I've talked about before across from the entrance to Walmart that's falling down. It's next to the abandoned gas station.
Oh, yeah.
We have finally... We, we have finally-
It's not bad.
Exactly.
That's, that's a new-
It's not gasoline, but it's-
Only a little more than that.
Oh, I'm in. Yes, okay. Well, the house, anyway, is falling down. We finally got the property owner to demolish it, so they, it should be demolished within the next month.
What about the Kennet Grange?
Well-
Yeah, what?
That's been going on for five years now. It's an eyesore. We've complained about it, and he's around, he's active, he's, he's there.
Our zoning officer has been working with him. He goes to clean it up. He spoke to him as recent as last week, and told him he is going to get out there and get some of that wood cleaned up and start cleaning up the property.
He lied.
He's absolutely ruined the grain. Took the-
Looks like the dickens.
I've offered to buy it, and he won't sell it to me.
Well, I know there's other people that want to buy it as well, that have told me recently they're going to approach him, so I don't know.
I would-
It would be nice if somebody fixed it up.
He's just going to care, he's just going to let this go as long as he can.
He trawled the potting off the front there to mess.
Yeah, it is. Well, our zoning officer wrote him a letter on Friday, and he gave him thirty days to get all the violations addressed.
He won't answer.
So is it historic?
Yeah.
It is.
The old school.
Mm-hmm.
The Grange and then the school.
Were, were there a lot of complaints about the nursery on fifty-two that is at least not up anymore? And is the owner responsible for cleaning up the fire debris? Do you know anything about it?
Yes, they, there were a lot of complaints about that, and I don't know if everybody's aware, Bill brought up that Seabees Gardens blew up two weeks ago.
Oh, I heard.
Yeah.
I never see it.
Wow.
So right now, he's not allowed to touch the building, because they're still doing an investigation to determine why it blew up. But once it is end, we, our building inspector has roped off the whole property, they're not allowed to go near anything. But once it's, the investigation's over, then they are required to clean it up.
There's a conservancy property over here on, I think it's Fairwood Road. They had four or five big dumps of mulch there.
It's on Rosedale Road.
I mean, Rosedale Road. And I bought it up about three months ago. They said they were going to clean it up, and they never have.
Well, the thing is, they're, they're not the land conservancy property, the old bit, the property. They're not in any violation by having mulch piles. So they have communicated to our zoning officer that they are going to spread that out over the next month.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you, very good.
And this may be a big side to the issue, but on the news tonight, they're talking about an accident on Forty-One.
Forty-One.
Forty-One. Being Kennet Township, was that in fact Kennet Township?
Yes.
Yes.
It was.
Okay.
Little trial court or anything.
Okay, I thought it was, um-
Chief McCarthy was actually at the accident.
There's two people remembered, there's about a mile of Forty-One in Kennet Township, because most of the activity that occurs is in New Garden. I'm going to have the safety committee address. The popular restaurant has become very popular, and we're seeing more accidents there. This one was horrendous. We're going to look at that through the safety committee, see what we can do, if anything.
You guys are on for the next question.
I have one more question on you. Are you going to talk about the second policeman in this session, or are you going to do it later?
I'm going to talk about it.
Okay.
Actually, I might as well talk about it now, I'll say it later.
Have you finished your report?
Well, he's going to add something to it, so it better-
I warned you, I had something to, as well.
The supervisors have discussed the need for more police coverage. They've discussed it with Chief McCarthy. They decided to hire a police officer that has been working for the township part-time through Harrisburg Borough. So he will start in January, full-time.
Okay. I saw in the budget, there was sixty-five thousand dollars allocated for his salary.
Yes.
Now, we're going to have a second patrol car.
Yes.
And the perks that go along with that type of thing. So we're essentially doubling our police budget from maybe a hundred and some thousand dollars to over two hundred thousand dollars. My question, my question is, what, what facts or information did we use in order to determine that we needed a second police officer?
I will need to let Albert and the supervisors address that.
Well, I'll take a crack at that, Bill. A lot of it is subjective, but furthermore, a lot of it is input from the citizens of the township. There's always issues about cars speeding on our roads, and you've heard that many times. We're certainly not immune to many crimes that are occurring. In some cases, some years they've gone up, and other years they've gone down. But I also want to mention one other thing. When we hire, as we did with Albert, a full-time policeman for Kennet Township, we don't get a full-time policeman for Kennet Township. He has responsibilities to respond to nine-one-one, which takes him out of our jurisdiction. And that takes up, Albert, if I'm not correct, it takes up almost forty percent of your time.
At least that.
At least that. So when we hire a full-time policeman, we're getting between fifty and sixty percent of his effective use in our township. And so too with the new person, that we will only get that amount from him. So we're working with fifty to sixty percent of these two people, which will double that which we've had before, and it seems to be something that the township people want.
So we have, as far as facts go, we don't have a trend, or do we have a criminal activity that Albert-
We're looking at spending a lot more time on traffic now with that being the second officer.
Compared to, compared to last year and the year before, and that type of thing?
Yeah. Safety committee's looked at this, and so have the supervisors.
Let me remind you of one thing, and Scudder, you're on the regional planning commission now, aren't you?
That's great.
Ten to fifteen years ago, we conducted a very thorough study with the help of consultants from Harrisburg on a regional police force. And they said at the time, that's, it's not appropriate, but review it, because the area's growing, it's getting more dense, it's going to have more crime. They suggested wait ten years, and I think it's probably fourteen or fifteen now. There are locations within Pennsylvania that have regional police forces. We have the makings of one right now, and that is, the borough has, I think, twelve full-time police officers. New Garden has eleven. East Marlborough has two. In fact, I remember being told by East Marlborough, when you hire your first one, you'll be hiring a second one pretty soon. And then, now we're going to have two. So we have twenty, oh, twenty-five or twenty-six police officers in our region right now. And what I'm asking for is that the regional planning commission think about a study to look whether or not this region is appropriate for a regional police force. Thank you.
Bill, I'd like to, to comment on that a little bit. A part of your reference to all of the, the officers in the area of creating a de facto regional police force, so we already had that explained, what is happening now when Chief of Police is out of the township forty percent of the time, because he's working within the region. So the point you raised is very important. But I think that the study should also, and I've talked about this both at the safety committee meetings and at the, at the supervisors' meeting, I think that the township should do a serious consideration of what our needs are, and how we most effectively going to be able to meet them. So just hiring is perhaps overkill. I think instead of a shotgun approach, if I can put it that way, a rifle is a more appropriate thing. So I'd like to see more development in time on that question. And Chief, can you hold it for one second before you-
Sure, I'm just, when I be ready, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I need to state something.
I know, you and I have talked about this very often, and with, with respect. But I, I do think that, that there is a due diligence part on the part of the supervisors, that we should be doing that kind of in-depth search. The other thing is, and I just took a quick look at the, at the budget, we are paying to have somebody here part-time. That, that person was unable to be here during Sandy, because his part-time availability had been impacted by the number of hours that he was allowed to expend. So when we needed him here most, he couldn't be here. And as it is, we're spending through nine, through nine months of 2012, if I read this quickly and correctly, we've spent fifty thousand dollars for the privilege of having him here, part-time. And for a little bit more, we have him full-time. So there is, there is an economy issue that's going on here, and that's the reason why I've been going with this. As you know, when I was running for election, the, the whole issue of what we needed for a police force was an important question. I think that question continues to remain on the, on the, the area of concern. But having been here and seeing what's going on and how things have developed, I also see that it isn't as nearly a simplistic picture as I thought that it might have been a year or eighteen months ago. So your concerns are justifiable, and I, for one, and I believe that all of us, supervisors, Lisa and Chief, are going to continue, and of course, the safety committee, are going to continue to look at this very closely, because it is a very important issue, and the, the incremental increases can very quickly turn around like- Chief, you wanted to say something.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. When Mike set up, because of nine-one-one calls, I'm out of the township forty percent of the time. I'm not out of Kennet Township. It just means while I'm handling those calls, I'm not available for any other services. Other thing is, you give more than forty hours out of me, I'm sour, you know, I'll have a problem putting in time. You're not approving this to a police agent. Doesn't matter to me, it's a decision for you, for the residents. Mr. Button brings up some good points, and I would have to show him where all this justification came from, as I showed you, because the nine-one-one calls, Chief, we get, they don't lie. When I first came out here, I would have never thought that you had the activity that you have, because all we got from the state police were the list of the calls that they responded to, and they responded to the one member available by, by priority. So a lot of other calls, particularly the calls that come into the door, where the resident says, "I've been having this problem with my neighbor for five years, and I can't get anything done." The state police say that's a local ordinance, and local ordinances do not get enforced by that, or what happens in some situations, a couple we have in the township that we're familiar with. The event has been going on, on and on for years. So a trooper arrives at one-nine-one law call, and a different arrives at the next one, and a different arrives at the next one. But they never understand what is occurring in the township, and that's the service we're trying to provide. Another thing is, meeting after meeting, we've heard people say, "I want more traffic enforcement." We have roads that increased in volume, we also found the speed of roads decreased in volume. One of the things the safety committee looked at was Hillendale Road when Route One was being constructed, because we knew the traffic that shifted off of Route One because of the construction wasn't going to stay there. And you could sit anywhere you want, watch the guards come off Hillendale Road, go to Hillendale by Route One, go to Route One by Hillendale. That's a problem we can't do anything about, because we take local road use tax money. So all these factors were involved, and like I said, I'm glad to not take your time now, but glad to show him what we're talking about. He would be surprised, being a resident here for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Over here. One question to Scudder, it was unclear to many of your comments, do you support hiring a full-time policeman for next year or second?
I have so far, yes. Yes.
Joe?
Yes, thank you. Was the position advertised for?
No.
Is this a township policy, not advertised for?
No, it was not necessary to advertise this.
It seems to be a-
I beg your pardon?
Seems to be a behavior of-
Not required.
Kennet Township.
And what do you base that on?
To hire without advertising.
And would you base that on-
To hire within. Would you disagree with that?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. There's several positions that you've announced, you've done hiring, and-
We don't advertise for an auditor, but that's a consultant.
Pardon me?
We advertise for an auditor, we advertise for engineers, we advertise for a lot of things, but we don't advertise for-
Employees we don't advertise for.
That's correct.
And why don't you advertise-
We don't have to.
To seek the best talent?
We don't have to, or we don't need to. We have somebody we think-
I'm sorry, what?
I think we have the talent here.
Yeah. If we, if we know somebody-
Do you agree with the math?
Yes. Let's go on to the next subject on the agenda. We'll go to old business, and before you do, I wanted to say something in relation to the, to Lisa's report. I wanted to, I wanted to say that, I want to say publicly that during the crisis of the Sandy Storm, I was really strongly impressed with the work that Lisa did, the Chief of Police did, with the other support staff, the fire department, and whatnot. I thought they did an outstanding job. And so I want to, I want to say publicly how deeply thankful and grateful I am for the work that they did, and I think that they deserve to be recognized in that regard.
My guy, the road crew did that, listen.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for, on my-
Before you go on to Burn, I just, I, I wanted to say that I do have, want to thank Phil McLaughlin, because he has helped me tremendously with all these reports, and putting them all together, and it's been a great help. So I do want to thank him for that.
He's right here.
Sorry, we will now indeed go on to the Burn discussion. We have a potential agreement here in front of us to purchase the development rights and conservation easement on a particular piece of property in our township, which is owned by then de Burnt on Burton Mill Road. It contains seven point approximately four acres. It has been- Scudder, you and Bob and I have looked at this conservation easement, it has gone through a number of revisions. It has been evaluated by the conservation easement realtors about when, and we have thought that it is a bargain for the conservation value on the, on the, what do I say? Evaluation, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we kicked this around some time ago, and recently, and I would like to make a motion that we purchase the development rights and conservation easements as outlined in this document in front of me, which you have seen, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I move that at this moment. Is there a second?
So is it a good opportunity?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right. Now, now there is, now there is an opportunity.
Thank you.
If you'd like to, please, please go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to make sure that I understand that there are, that this, this easement does not include any public, any trails, public trails. Is that correct?
At the moment, that is correct, however, it provides very clearly that in the future, if the then landowner and the board of supervisors wish to establish trails, it can be done.
And secondly, am I correct in understanding that the appraisal price and the dollar price- that the appraisal price and the dollar price are both the same? That is, it's 100% of the, of the appraisal that was done for the, the landowner? Is that correct?
Correct.
And I, I also want to point out that the, the assessed value of the property as a whole, assessed value for tax purposes is $156,000. So, we're basically offering to pay 100% of the assessed value of the property. So, I, I think that that's important to understand and put into perspective, recognizing that, to the best of my knowledge, we have never paid 100%.
Very, very in mind, Scudder, that the assessed value and the market value are two very different things. The assessed value has never played a part in determining the market value. And market value is what we were most concerned with.
I understand there's a distinction, but I think that it's very interesting that, that those prices become very significantly close together. The other thing I wanted to do, because I think it's important that we understand the process, and I'm not sure that, that the residents have seen how this works. The LCAC Committee, Land Conservation and...
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, good. Land, okay. Has a process that it goes through in making recommendations for how to evaluate, not for dollar value, but for importance, the property. So, I'd like to, to take a look at that spreadsheet that was worked out by the LCAC for this matter. It's, I think you see it's identified as LCAC, everything. Could somebody explain to us the significance of what that is? How did you calculate it, and what's it mean?
I would, excuse me, I would ask John Marmen if you can. Good to see you back.
I have a lot of...
Indeed. Without his law, what I learned tonight.
Member of the Land Conservation Budget Committee. Basically, this form here, it's called the Land Preservation Criteria Program. And it's really based on, most of it's based on the Resource Privatization Program that was in place several years ago. And that looked at resources across the entire township and rated those resources by such things as, as you can see here, whether there's streams on it, slopes, woodlands, et cetera. So, basically, this form is evolved from that process. And it was really implemented by Alan Bell. Alan generated this form, and he used it within a model to evaluate the resources and to essentially evaluate the resources within a given piece of property. So, the, the values that were here were worked out, or weighted values here, basically came out of the Resource Privatization Program. It was added because that program did not have the cultural historic that you see below there. So, those were later added by Alan in conjunction, working, I believe, with Gwen and Stowe and Lisa. And that evolved therefore the entire sheet. Fundamentally, what we have done in the Land Conservation Budget Committee is, when asked, we do a site walk of the property. And using that site walk, we make observations to make judgment reasonably objective, but there's some subjectivity. We look at the factors. Now, in this particular case, based on firework, if the property had a woodland on it, it gave the entire value for that woodland to that property because there was no specific site-wise generation of value. We'd have to suddenly use the area that the property was located in. And I'll make a comment later, because we do have additional pieces of information. So, that's basically what we did. We've done it on other properties, we do a site walk, keeping in mind the areas that were on here, and provide evaluation as our best judgment. Now, we have one additional item that's been added post this particular form actually being generated. And that was work that was also done by project approved by the Supervisors and involved work with the Brandywine Conservancy, where we did, using GPS technology, et cetera. They're actually able to win by sight and look at the resources specifically on those sites. So, in this particular case, we have sort of blended that in where we thought was appropriate. Because you'll see some of the values like this, this moderate slope, we've actually given a property value that was somewhat different than just accepting the 10 that was there. We did that by looking at the spreadsheet and looking at the resources that were listed on that spreadsheet for that specific site. So, that, that is the, that's the fundamental approach. It came, it's a resource basis, it's entirely different. You have sort of have like two goalposts. One goalpost is the easement appraisal approach, which is often based on best use, for example, on the property versus then the conservatives. This is all the way on the other end of the spectrum, which is basically looking at all of the resources that are on the property and giving a value to it from a resource point of view.
Okay. Give me your, your current please.
Sorry, sir. Are you done, Tom? Thank you. If, if, while you're still hot and open here, I'm going to ask you about a couple of different areas. Because I'd like to know how you figured them, if I may. So, I'm going to, first of all, it's going to be, going to be some switching around here. Do you need to be able to see this as I ask you questions? Because I'd like to show you some pictures as well.
Oh, sure.
So, if we switch the pictures, have you all right?
Can you give me my copy?
I think I actually have it, I may have. No, I don't think I do have it.
Scudder, I'm going to ask if you don't mind to accelerate the points that you want to make of the questions, because I do want the audience to also participate. Is there a question?
Right, I understand. I'm going to try to get the issues out on the table, then the questions can be asked.
And, because your question is Burrows Run Creek.
Okay. There's, there should be one that's identified as pictures. If you could jump to the first one of those. Yeah, thank you.
Control, we need, oh, yeah, she got it. You're the expert on this control, is moving this protection.
This is much better.
Is, this is, this is the property itself, is that right? The plot?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Is Burrows Run displayed on that plot plan anywhere?
Top corner.
I'm sorry?
Up in the top right corner.
It's through the area too. This is, is this it, oh, here? Okay, can you tell us what this is, do you know?
There is, there's a wooded area back there. That, towards that end of the property, there is a wooded area that's in there. I don't know specifically what that...
I think that is... This is species, there's an issue for endangered species in here? Who does, do you know?
A, a PND survey was done somewhere.
Oh, PND, okay.
And endangered species, the threatened, Pennsylvania threatening grass by the rush was identified in that area. And so, that's put into a statewide database. Anytime an endangered species pops up. And that's why that's been identified on the plan.
And so, no development can go on back here because of that, is that correct?
No, my understanding is that if there was to be development, they'd have to go back and check to make sure the plan was still there or not there, and then make adjustments according to it.
If it were there, they could not develop there?
I, I'm not sure if they could or not. There would, you'd have to check with the Natural Areas Program, to make sure that they would even decide if you could or not, or what adjustments you could make in order to develop.
Okay. Can the, can the committee tell me why, out of total of 20 points? Yes. Streams get 20 points for this?
Again, Scudder, there is the, we do make a distinction. In the Resource Privatization, they made a distinction between a Burrows Run-related watering versus any other water that may be on the property. So, it was based on that, based on the Resource Privatization, they gave twice the value for water that was contributing to Burrows Run.
Okay. What I'm wondering is, why would it be 15 or 10 out of 20? This, you're giving it the whole 100% value. I'm wondering why you would give it that large a value?
Well, that was, that was the original process.
I want to interrupt this, if you don't mind. Scudder, I appreciate what you're trying to drive at, but your, your opinion after they walked the property is subjective. There are a bunch of people in the committee that are used to doing this. They have some expertise in it. And I'm not sure it serves a useful purpose to query them to try to understand why they came up with a subjective number.
I understand that it is subjective. I respect this committee very much because they've been doing this for a while. I'm trying to understand, through their subjectivity, how they got to that number. Does, so, for instance, at every location where Burrows Run is contiguous, touches upon, or is close to, a property, it gets a 20 out of 20?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Is that, is that it?
Yeah.
So, as long as it's there, it's covered, okay. Class 2 woodlands, if we could, yeah, let me just take a look at that in a second. I assume you recognize the chart?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if I can locate this property correctly, it's like right about in here? You're right. I'm sorry, because it's along here.
Yeah, it's along there.
Yeah, just where your finger is.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, so, this color, if you can move it just a little bit to the... Thank you. This color, you can hardly see it. This is a, is a little here and a little here, which would be class 3. Class 2, I assume would be this, class 1 would be this. If the property isn't here, it might pick up a little bit of class 1. But this looks to me like there's no class at all. Am I reasoning that map correctly?
Now, actually, there, there is a small amount of a class 2 woodland. Sort of towards the back of the parcel. Where your finger was, the, the ridge was roughly upwards.
Clipped?
Yeah. And that's, that's where the parcel's at, and there's a piece of the class 2 woodland on there.
So, the scale for class 2 woodlands is 25, you gave it 20.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And meadows, out of a scale of 10, you gave it 4. Okay, can we, can we jump to the photographs again? If, yeah, if you can go forward to the photographs. That would be, that would be, I believe, a Google map of the site in question. If we just keep on going by those. So, we're going to look at those other pictures and larger. Does that, does that look like the property there?
Mm-hmm, there's a rose, yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming that that reflects fairly steep terrain?
There's moderate slope.
Moderate slope there.
Yeah, moderate slope.
Not fairly steep.
I wouldn't say there's any steep slope, moderate slope.
Okay. And with that, excuse me, Lisa, and that wood line up there, does that reflect a class 2 woodland?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be the house?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, Mike?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The barn is to the left.
Barn is to the left.
It's back in here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's to the left.
There's the house there, the, the drive that goes into the house is on the left. The barn would be to the left.
Is that on the other side of the driveway?
Yeah, the, the barn's on this side, right.
Okay.
Is this an entire parcel?
Yes.
Buildings and everything?
Yes.
And it's a historic farm.
Would that be the reflection here of historic structures, 10 out of 10?
There is, yes.
I forget, 18 something would go.
The residence is not historic, though?
We didn't think so, we didn't, we didn't.
We didn't value it.
Okay. Okay. I would suggest that there's lots of meadows, but I'm wondering if there's as much woodland as... So, is, am I viewing that way different from you, obviously?
Well, yeah, you are, because you did not conduct the site walk. What you did is you did a drive-by.
Yeah.
Right? And unfortunately, the bulk of the parcel is over the hill, that you would be hiding. If you had gone over and walked this behind the house, you would have seen the rest of the parcel. So, the one thing you have to be careful of is, an appraisal drive-by versus a site walk is going to give you a different perspective.
Can you tell me where there is visually significant landscapes? I think you gave that 10 out of 10. Would you consider what we saw as being significant landscapes?
I, I thought, yes, yeah, I thought so.
And is the property still being actively farmed at this point?
Yes, it's, it's horse farmed.
Horse farmed. Very helpful. Thank you very much.
Now, we'll go to other questions from the audience, if you would please. Joe?
Yes, thank you much. I was with the AC for approximately eight years or so.
With the what, who? Who were you with, Lisa?
Environmental Advisory Council.
Okay.
Other township. We were, one of our charges, our main charges was creating these maps with the Brandywine Conservancy, for which I, you recognized me. Now, I've seen this property from at least three sides. And I don't agree with the hedgerows being class 2 woodlands. I don't think it comports with these studies done by the Brandywine Conservancy. Hedgerows are essentially class 3 woodlands. Class 2 are obviously higher. Class two are obviously a higher grade. Plus, with the protections given from the Pendy heritage, the developmental prospects of this property are blessed. In other words, it's, I think, eleven acres, correct?
Eleven point four.
Eleven point four, I see. So the zoning here would require five acres, am I right there?
Four.
Four.
Four. So then, essentially, if it was totally buried, you could get two lots.
I don't know.
Well, assume, well, just assume.
You'll assume that, you can assume, perhaps, they could get two lots, yes?
Right. You couldn't get three, because it doesn't divide, you don't have twelve.
I'm not sure where you're going, but go ahead.
Well, here's my argument. I'll make that point right now. So essentially, you have a house and a barn, which would be one, one lot in that zoning. So at play, it's one more lot. That additional lot is even not quite certain, because of the Pendy sites, the slopes, the alluvial soils, and the limitations in the bulk. So I'm wondering where the bargain here is for the township, for the public. Now, I know there's a great deal of money here to come to the owners, but what is, we're really getting as taxpayers for our money? And, you know, secondarily, was there an appraisal done by the township? Or are we accepting the appraisal done by the applicant?
Using the appraisal by the applicant to base our decision.
Uh-huh. So how much are we contemplating giving on?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And I brought this up at a previous meeting, and it seemed to be that we didn't want to spend the money to get an appraisal for ourselves.
I don't know where you come to that conclusion, but I...
I think P-12 argued that point.
Say what?
I believe you made the point when I brought that up, that it was a money-saving process.
No, don't put any words into my mouth.
No, I didn't do that, hey.
Well, I never spoke to the appraisal process. I have no idea what you're referring to. So, sorry, Joe.
Okay, well, I stand corrected, but, uh, let me just...
So, can you make your point, please, for the other people?
Yeah, my point is this: Why are we overpaying for this property?
Well, I think you...
It doesn't seem to carry the value. It has no trail portion. What does the public gain here? It's on the state line, to begin with.
Joe, thank you for your opinion. Tell me...
Thank you.
Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, there only been one appraisal made, and it, as appraisal, it was done by the owner. Question: Have we ever paid full appraisal for a property by the owner? Have we ever paid whatever he said I want, and I've done this appraisal, here it is, a hundred and fifty? Have we ever paid that before?
I'm not sure I under... Try your question once again.
Well, a lot of times...
Have we ever paid a hundred percent of an appraisal?
Hundred, hundred percent of an appraisal.
No, we have not.
Never paid it before, okay.
Any other questions? Bearing none, I move the motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, carry on, Joe, please. Okay, let's move on to the next one, please. Ms. Donna Murray.
Okay, thank you. I'm just here to give my annual report about the library.
Wonderful. You want to stand up, or come up here, or shout from there?
I'll...
Go ahead, if you want.
Okay. I just wanted to report, first and foremost, a big thank you to the supervisors, the staff, and the residents of Kennet Township, which is one of our biggest supporters, and also to let you know that the library is busier than ever. You know, people like to say, "We don't need libraries. We have Google and we have our Kindles." But in fact, we're up in every measurable statistic, from visitors to borrowing items, and I, I think you all have, have the statistics there. And we just continue to go up every year. And so I don't know where this information is coming from, but we are busier than ever. Yeah, program attendance, and this is despite the parking challenges. If you try to come to the library, you really have to want to get there to find a parking space. And so I imagine that when we have a new facility with better parking, we'll just explode. I think one of the things that has people continuing to use the library are downloading books. We have nine thousand, excuse me, almost ten thousand eBooks available for people to download for free onto their Kindles, Notes, or iPads. Now, that wouldn't bring you into the library, because you do that from home, but that is just one thing that we're offering. We also have lots of classes on technology. So right after Christmas time, when everybody gets their new e-readers under the tree, in January, we'll start having classes of how to use it, how to download items that the library makes available for free. And Byard Taylor is not one of the largest, well, it is, it's a medium size, medium to large. It's not the biggest library in the Chester County system, where there are eighteen libraries, but we are the second highest user of e-materials. So, you know, people in our area really are taking advantage of, of the free e-materials. Some other statistics, Kennet Township, you know, borrows an awful lot of materials, and Kennet Township also, forty-eight percent of your residents are library cardholders, which is really, I mean, that's what we shoot for. We, you know, if you've got half your residents, that's really good. That's way above average, and, you know, that's just, it's great for you all, and, you know, we're appreciative of the, of the support. In the package also is our most recent financial report, along with a lovely little photo. We had a bookworm in front of the library. It was a moss monster, and it's part of, it was for October, part of the scarecrow competition we had in town. And just to show you how much people love their library, for the first few days, if you notice, the monster is eating books, and people kept coming in and bringing the books and saying, "Somebody destroyed these books," and they were distraught. So we had to put a sign out there to say, "The books are part of the display, they were ruined already." So, I mean, it's just an indication, to me, of how much people love the library, how passionate they are about the library. The million-dollar question that everybody wants to know is the new library, and I, I have nothing to announce tonight, but we really hope to have some news within the next few weeks, hopefully by the end of the year. We do have, we did have, a couple of years ago, an advisory team that was working really hard on locating where would be the ideal locations for a new library, and now we have a building committee that really, we just need our board to sign off on some announcements, and our board meets tomorrow night, but we just need our board to sign off on a couple of really good announcements that really, even though we haven't been announcing things, we have been taking some really good steps positive, and we're very excited about it and hope to be able to announce some good news.
Great, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute, I have a question.
Sure.
I know, I've been paying forever...
Excuse me, you are...
Stan Kline.
Thank you.
I've been paying forever for a library tax.
Yeah.
It's been going on for a long time, and I can remember, a new library is coming. It must be ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Right.
What is the difficulty in building a new library, and how much do you have in your funds for a new library?
Okay. First, let me clarify, your library tax has nothing to do with building a new library. Your library tax goes to operations. So that's what we use every year to buy the books and to pay the staff and to run programs. So that's where it goes. There are, I think, differing opinions as to what, why the process has taken so long. I am, I've been the director for six years, and since I've been there, we've had a period where we kind of put it to rest, and we said, "All right, the first time around, it didn't work, for whatever reason." We've been spending a couple of years to sow the seeds of support, to have people understand the value of the library, and to do things strategically so that we can be more valuable in the, in the community. So then about four years ago, we started the advisory team and worked hard on that, and then about two years ago, our building committee came together. That's what I can tell you, and we feel like we are on a successful path right now. So I, I can't answer to the questions of the past, but I can tell you that we feel we are on a good path right now.
Any other questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Okay, great. Lisa, would you take over the agenda, please?
As you all know, in August, we had to find a new building inspector. We've been working with Keystone Municipal Services as a third-party building inspection company. They are performing building inspections, certificate of occupancy permits, licensing to inspections when property may be violated. The supervisors requested that I got quotes from other third-party companies. I have received three other quotes. Keystone Municipal Services was the lowest, even with a couple of them. The supervisors had decided to continue with Keystone for the interim. They are comparing the qualifications of all the other building inspection companies. So for the interim, they need to formally appoint Keystone as the third-party building inspection company, and then in January, they will formally appoint the company.
To move. Second, if necessary. All in favor? Okay, that is all.
Joe?
Just as a reminder, I think, might you announce, October, November, somewhere around there, that you had hired the former building inspector? And I don't know who it was.
We have not hired an employee to work as a building inspector. This person is under contract.
Which person? Lisa?
The one that would, yes.
No, I was talking about the former guy. He was an employee, right?
Correct.
And it was back last year.
Yes.
The end of the year, somewhere. I can't remember exactly, but I'm...
What's your question? What is your question?
My question is, at that point, I asked if you had advertised for that position, and you claimed you had not, as well.
Well, we let that person go.
Right. Thank you. Point second.
Well, I think Lisa said that some time ago.
Right.
Moving on. We'll go to roadwork, but before we leave New Business, I have two rather irrelevant things to announce, which are kind of nice. One has to do with the amount of recyclable material that's deposited in the bins at the maintenance garage, and in 2010, there was collected seven hundred and fifty tons, these are round numbers, seven hundred and fifty tons, for which we were given eight thousand dollars by the, by Secrum. In 2011, that jumped from seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a feather in our cap. We don't have the, the cash for it, but I'm sure it's going to go up in proportion. So this is something that everybody ought to be very proud of, and I am too. Secondly, it has to do with road traffic. From time to time, you people in the summer run over counters, two tubes in the middle of the road, and we try to keep consistent records of that. And I wanted to just merely read to you a count on a weekly basis. Firstly, it will be between Hillendale Road and, and Byard and McFarland, excuse me, on Hillendale, between Byard and McFarland. In 2006, was the month of, during the month of May, for a one-week period, there was approximately eleven thousand eight hundred vehicles going in both directions. In 2008, the same month, it was twelve thousand one hundred. And in June of 2012, the volume was ten thousand six hundred. So it's a slightly different time, but it's not incompatible. Another count was done on Rosedale between Hillendale and Henham. In July of 2010, there was approximately twelve thousand. In August of 2011, there was approximately thirteen thousand, and in June of 2012, there was fourteen thousand. So on the second set of counts, we do see an increase, but on the first set, oddly enough, it's pretty much straight line. So when somebody says there's a huge amount of increased traffic, well, it's, it's kind of spotty, and we don't have perfect records, but this is just an indication, and I'm sure you might like to know about it. Okay, we'll go to roadwork, and I'll have to report here from the roadmaster from the period of time, October 15 to November 12. Road inspection was done on October 16 with the roadmaster and three supervisors. We inspected the township roads that had been done in 2012 and went over the roads proposed for 2013. Bridge inspection was done by the state on our two bridges, South Bridge Drive and Pembroke Road. Both had minor issues that needed repair. Their work was done per their recommendation. The state bridge inspectors, inspections are done every two years. Pico has started a, to lay a gas main extension on Rosedale Road. They are more, well more than halfway done this time, and should be finished probably by the end of next week. This goes from Woodward to five points, right down, not five points, but right out to the corner of our...
Seven points.
Norway Road here. See, there's going to be two, principally two spurs that are going to go off, both to mushroom facilities, which has been the driving force for laying that line. People along the line have the right to tap into it if they see fit. By the way, that's been using some wonderful technology, the drilling, putting a pipe underground without anybody seeing where it's going, except by remote control, and that's a technology that's pretty swift. Tropical storm Sandy hit in October 28 and 9, and our crews worked throughout the storm to keep the roads open. Once wires came down, all we could do was close the road and wait for Pico. As a whole, we fared quite well in the storm. For some, a long way to power endured. Thanks, though, to all the people who contributed, their efforts, and Rooku particularly. Trees were cleaned up everywhere. Chipping was done where it was right away, interfered with right away, and large branches and so forth were hauled to the yard waste pile. That yard waste pile, by the way, is a roaring success, and it's well-used by everybody in the township. It's open from dawn to dusk. Our fall program is underway, cleaning leaves for shelters, and some south posts will be installed when needed, and we're getting the clouds all set to allow, hopefully, no snow.
Okay.
I want to comment on that one thing. Rooku cannot touch any wire. If the tree's down, they have to wait for Pico to shut that area off. So we got a lot of calls about that, that they are not permitted to and don't want to touch those lines, any wires or on trees.
We had, I was going to say the same thing. We had at least thirty people scream and yell at us, because we would not send the road crew out there to get the lines off the road and have a trail. And they didn't understand why they can't get out there and do it.
It'd be nice to pass the word to everybody about that condition, because if you were asked to go out and move a wire off the road, I don't think you would want to do it either.
And the head of this area for Pico, he keeps in communication via text message with me and our roadmaster throughout the entire storm, updating us on things, and if we have an area that has been sitting for quite a while, he will move crews around to try to accommodate things, and he does work with us.
I might also add, Lisa, that...
I might also add, Lisa, that not only are we appreciative of the work that Pico did, but Pico, I think, was also appreciative of the work that the township, and particularly you, did in keeping them in coordination with the needs of the township. We had a very nice letter that came in for, to that exact end.
Okay, we'll go to subdivision, like development. Lisa?
This is the great Ridge property.
Formerly White.
Formerly Whiteside. Before that. This is on McFarland Road between Rosedale and Hillendale. There's approximately 38 acres. Nineteen, almost 20 acres is east with the, um, Kenton Township Land Trust. They are proposing 112 apartment units. There will be 14 buildings with eight units in each building. So this is for preliminary approval. They have addressed all the issues in the conditional use decision. They've addressed all the issues for the preliminary approval, except a few minor issues in Ann Walters', our landscape architect's letter, and our township engineer's letter. So we are asking the supervisors to recommend preliminary approval based on the most recent plan. Andrew, did you have anything else you wanted to say before? And again, the out, the two conditions would be to address Gilmore Associates' letter dated November 8th, 2012, and Ann Walters' letter dated October 29th, 2012.
I thought that the letter was 11-8 as well. Is that the one, that's what you made that last correction?
Yeah, that was my last correction.
Got you.
John pointed that out.
Sorry, I had a quick. I move we give preliminary plan approval subject to those conditions that you just read for the, this, I'm going to run. Any further comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next project is Novak. It's located on Norway Road, right across from Carlton Drive. It's for four lots. Craig Novak owns the property.
You wrote a paper.
Four lots. Here, over there, upstairs. Craig Novak bought the property. He wants to divvy it into four lots for his kids. He's already built one lot on Lot 1, oh, a house, a house on Lot 1. This is for final approval.
Where is Norway Road? Right through the same.
Right here. Here's Carlton Drive. So Craig Novak lives up here. So, Craig Novak, this is for final approval with the following conditions. Approval from the Chester County Health Department for the water system and planning module. Approval from the Chester County Planning Commission for the planning module. DEP approval. Chester County Conservation and DTS approval. And then the applicant has to sign the rules and regulations for site development. The applicant RVP's being moved, be at preliminary stage.
Sure. Joe?
Now, you mentioned that there's already been a house built.
No, it's been in the process.
Or being built.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to approval.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused after.
Not for, sorry. What happened is, they, they applied for the subdivision plan. While it was going through the process with the planning commission, they had the right to build a house on it. So they did that. But what happened is, the subcommittee that handled it is here. They weren't real happy about that. What happened is.
Yeah, it's unusual.
Yeah, but they legally couldn't stop it. So they had to revise their plan because what they did on this lot, building a house, affected the plan and changed the land.
Subdivision?
Yes. So they had to redo the subdivision plan.
So that met subdivision, uh.
Yes.
Approved. Yeah. I assume, or when you come here.
Yeah.
Move we approve the Novak application for the farm plan? You did that. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. Extension?
Uh, we have one request for an extension to Hamm property until February 18th next week. We approve that extension.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. Hold up. We had, last month, we had the Carlton North and South test frozen. We, we sold money for the landscaping. We now have a letter from Ann Walters approving the landscaping changes. And so for Carlton North, this is release number 11, the final closeout, for the amount of $12,896.42. I move we approve that release.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Carlton South, similar thing, 32,000, $36.42. I would ask we approve it with the condition that this, that this about rocks are near the basin, or that that situation is straightened out or something.
Yes, that's what Charles about, he said with that stuff is, is the concrete that was taken out from when the curb was repaired, and they're going to take it to a recycling plant to have the concrete recycled, but they were too busy at the time. But he said within a week to two weeks, he believes they'll be capable of taking it and will have it removed.
Would the motion be approved that, that it's approved after the concrete?
Approved on the condition that they remove the concrete.
Yes. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to comment, if you don't mind. I thought the first one that you did, I thought I heard you say $12,000, but I thought it was about 30-some thousand, you assigned.
No, wow.
No.
Which one was 12, north or south?
North. We only have 12,000, I don't know who's ready.
Yeah, I have 32,000, but as long as it's coming down to zero.
Yeah. No, 32,000, I don't know.
Yeah, I have 32 and change on both of them. 32,000, 132,47. And 32,000, 398. Yeah, so as long as it's coming down to zero.
Bob Johnson threw this, and he has, um, the release is 12,898.42. He says that you requested 32,398.42, it included 19,500 that was released, the landscaping.
That was previously.
Previously released, and S R number nine. So the total remaining was 12,898.42.
Perfect, I apologize. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Mr. Chairman, I approach the board.
Yes, please.
I wanted to approach the three of you collectively and publicly, so nobody misconstrues what I say, because this is not going to be very popular. Some people might, almost everybody will get upset in one form or another. What, to use some background on this, a few months ago, I had to tell you about Pico. Only accountant, and of course, I call out all kinds of names on that.
Yeah, please use that.
And I really don't care. I'm not trying to offend anybody. It's an issue that needs to be dealt with, and I'm just bringing it to your attention. Speaking of trails, there's a 10-mile trail program proposed for Kenton Township. Yet the township itself has seen nothing of it, it's been referred to. A few weeks ago, we've been talking about this for a while. I came down Hillendale Road, and as soon as I came over the bridge, there was construction equipment on both sides, but no construction zone set up. I'm particularly careful about that because construction zones affect the drivers and affect the workers. So I enforce it. You can enforce it under, under the David Code, Title 16, so I enforce it. Well, this one kind of caught me by surprise, because I hadn't heard any mention of this, of this project. It looked like a pipeline to me. So I came back to the township and I questioned, asked questions about it, and nobody knew exactly what it was. Although later, we remembered there were some formal inquiries about a crossing at that particular location. Well, there has to be a traffic and engineering study done to do a crossing there because of site distances. But the trail was already done. There were some questions about erosion control and a few other things that go along with construction projects. The building inspector, the zoning officer, or the roadmaster didn't know anything about this. Although later on, the roadmaster was asked an informal question about, was a crosswalk possible? And his response, because I was there, was, anything's possible. And I agreed with him. This trail just got built. It disappeared. So looking at it, trying to work things out, we talked to the project development manager. And we said, how did this, who approved this? And the response was, it's approved. It's all approved. I don't know why you're raising a question. But we couldn't determine who approved it. The next day, she came back and told us she resigned. So we knew something was up with this. So we tried to work things out. Township always, as you instruct me, tries to work things out for different committees. We arranged an informal meeting. Scudder, you were there, Mike, I think you got tied up on something else. The roadmaster, people from this trail committee were all present. And it was pretty obvious by the physical characteristics of that location that a crosswalk would not be done at that location. But it was suggested that it be referred to the safety committee. So I went to the safety committee, and the trail people said, this was approved by the township. Well, the township was in support of it, and the township sent some type of support letter for grant funding so the grant could be approved. There were no plans. The problem you have at that location is if a person is six foot two or less is standing on the south side of the road and attempting to cross the road, a motorist on the bridge can't see him. And vice versa. The motorist can't see him, he can't see the motorist. And you really don't hear it because of the physics of the, coming down the hill from New Garden, making the turn, then making the turn onto the bridge. If you don't hear that car, you better get across that road pretty quick, because I've had it run it a couple times. Realizing how dangerous it was, talking to the roadmaster, I closed it. We put up a couple traffic cones, and we told the people, it's closed. There's a couple things you need to determine. First, how are you going to keep cars off this trail? Safety line. And the response was, all of them not to go on it. Well, just a couple days later, an 18-foot tractor trailer thought it was a road. Eighteen wheels. Tractor trailer. We have a picture of it. So that's one issue. Then there were issues about how are you going to police it? What are you going to do for emergency services? How are you designating locations on the trail? All these issues should have came up and should have been planned. And you, you already know all this. What happens is, just a couple, just last week, I get told, uh, this is a land trust project, Nick can do it.
Who's the contractor?
Dick Carl or somebody who's doing this project. Okay? That made the question. Me. And whenever you're, whenever you're going to do something with the law, go back and read the law. And why I want to point this out to you, I said something you may not want to hear, is I can't, I question myself as to where is the land trust? Now, this is not against open space. I have met nobody in this township that is against open space. In fact, in researching all these laws, I found that Tom Nail did an awful lot of work on this in 1992. And Kenton Township was one of the forerunners in getting the Open Space Land Acquisition Act passed, commonly referred to, and I'll refer to as Act 32. You were the premier. You passed the referendum, which gave you a quarter of 1%. It's one of the highest around so far. Rest of them, like 5 tenths of a percent. So the township residents really wanted this. Some of them I've already said, they're not in favor of the way some of these things get done, and I really don't know what that means, except the land conserva, land trust, and if I'm wrong, correct me, and I get to that at the end, where does it get it starting? It operates independently, but where does it get its legal authority? So if you go back to read Act 32, it tells you the township can pass the word, it's creating the land trust. And now you see, this is where, you, we talked about a lot of history, nobody wanted to go there. Personally, I didn't want to go there either, because this is a very sensitive subject. It's so sensitive that after closing the trail with the cones, we thought they were going to float, our roadmaster thought they would float away during Sandy. So he said, why don't we put up posts and some police yellow tape? And we did. And that yellow tape disappeared. They actually walked the whole group across that. The township, knowing that it's unsafe, has to do something about that. You're required by a court case that happened here in Chester County. If you know it's unsafe, you have an obligation to do something about it. So we put the tape back up again. Tape came down again. This time, there were signs posted that said, caution, stop, look, listen. Traffic does not stop. I assume they think, or somebody thought, by posting those signs, you removed your liability. Well, you didn't. By saying caution, stop, look, listen, you were actually encouraging people to cross the road. I can't, and still don't understand, and I'm a new kid on the block, as to why the township didn't get involved in this in the first place, because in the discussions, we said, run the path up to General Mill Road and cross at an intersection where most people expect people to cross. They said, you can't do that, they don't own the property. But township, in a sense like that, could study and how to emite a domain, can take a portion of that, which is probably what should be done. Because when it went to the safety committee, the safety committee said, let's talk to the engineer to see what kind of study he thinks this needs. So I, I do have it, I don't have it right now with me, but the engineer came back and said it needs a full traffic and engineering study. And I'm certified to do them, and I agreed with that. And one of the things he says is, well, number one, you got a problem, because this is public money. So if it's public money, it has to be ADA compliant alone. So if you can't see a six-foot person, you're never going to see a wheelchair. We have to go back into the issue of how do we keep cars off of it? And because it's public money, it has to be open to everybody. There's a whole lot of things that, it doesn't make any sense to do a traffic and engineering study when the physical characteristics of the area won't permit it. That's a decision you will have to make, because as this recommendation came about, you're going to have to decide who pays for that. The land trust, land conservancy of Southern Chester County, or the township? But who is the Kenton land conservancy? And who is the Southern Chester County land conservancy? I don't know. So I went back and looked at this, and it looks like in 2007, for whatever reason, the land trust left the township. Some cases, you hear people say they were evicted, or whatever the case would be, but there was some type of problem here. An employee who was the open space land manager left, dismissed, whatever you want to say, turned right around and started working for the land trust. So that's very interesting, because the land trust has no authority without the township. And there's, you get told one time, asked us some questions about trying to figure out what's going on here, and why they suddenly put this trail in under whose authority. How did all this come about? And like, like I said, it would be easy for everybody to say, well, they're doing a good thing, just let them go. Except you have to do things legally. That's where it comes back on the three of you, unfortunately, me, because all of us took an oath to hold the state ball and the township wardens. So if you read this, oh, warden. And I read it, didn't really study it the way I probably should have, so this situation really didn't occur. Because the general population of the township that I speak to recognizes the divide. I mean, you're in this room, you see the divide. Sometimes it gets pretty hostile, and I've had to step in the middle, and you know that. How can this be put back together? That's a question that comes up to people who don't come here, because they don't want to step into that environment. So how do you put all this back together? The first thing you have to do is comply with the law. And just let me read, and just to remind you, I'm certainly not criticizing you, because you need to develop a plan, and I have somewhat of an idea. Pursuant to the authority contained in 32 PS, I'm going to give you the section number. The township hereby authorizes the creation of a local land trust, as termed and defined by the act, known to be known as the Kenton land conservancy. The local land trust shall be incorporated as a domestic nonprofit corporation and shall function as a nonprofit corporation under the Pennsylvania laws that create that, except for the following conditions. Now, what I thought happened was when they became a nonprofit corporation, they believed that that made them independent of the township. that that made them independent of the township. But it really doesn't, because this goes on to say, the business and affairs of local land trust shall be managed under the direction of the board of directors, who shall be chosen from the electors of the township, and whose members of the board shall serve the pleasure of the township board supervisors. Now, if you think about that for a second, you appoint the directors, just like you do for Southern Chester County Refuge Authority, Mixon Park, zoning hearing board, a whole lot of things. The township board supervisors appoints the directors. You appoint them, when they want to resign, they got to resign you. If you look at the present board of directors, they're nowhere near what the board looked like in 2005. So what happened to the board in 2005? That's the Kenton Township land conservancy. They're still in existence.
Kenton Township land trust.
No, it says conservancy here. But you might be right, it could be, because this was the newest ordinance. But they even said, let's leave it Kenton Township land trust. Where did they go? I can't find any records where they resigned the board supervisors. And I can't find anything that says you appointed new directors. They're still in existence. So, that's where the authority comes from. Let me go a little further. Also says, the local land trust shall file annual statement with the township board supervisors, which report shall make the provisions of the accounting of revenues and expenses. The local land trust shall have its books, accounts, and records audited annually in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, by an independent auditor, who shall serve as a, who shall be a certified public accountant. A copy of the report shall be attached to the, to the board's annual report. So they have to give you a report of what they did, and then they also have to give you the county involved monies they get, because they get township money, and they have in the past got township money. So, a concise, concise financial statement shall be published annually in the newspaper of general circulation of Chester County, Pennsylvania. So local land trust shall be subject to the Sunshine Act, meaning open meetings. Now, my point is, we, over the past several months, we all talked about audits. And we know the felony auditor, that, that's become very interested, and I hope to give you more on that. We know all about that, I, I still don't understand what the motivation was. There was some indication that the motivation was, they felt they were being denied access to township records. But once they gained those access the first year, what was the motivation on the second? But in looking at all these different things, there's a lot of strange things that happened in the past five years. And then you look at open space, and if you ever took a look at the properties that are being preserved, and some of them are absolutely beautiful, they belong in pictures. So people want that to continue, and you're preserving a lot of things for the future, and Kenton Township has set the stage for it. Others have all said, how do you do this? So, everybody wants to see that continue, but it doesn't like we're making a lot of process now. That's my opinion. My opinion here could be wrong. It's pretty clear. There could be court cases, I haven't seen anything, that change this, but there could be. So what I thought has to happen here, is you have to ensure compliance with the ordinances and the state law. That's the duty of the board supervisors. You need somebody legally to look at this. Now, in this research, somebody who acted as a legal counsel for the Kenton Township land trust at the time, said they could leave, they could act independently, because they're a nonprofit corporation, they're their own trust. I don't know who that was, I haven't told who that is, but apparently, the records must be there. At the same time, I don't know what our solicitor's position was, but the cause, the board was functioning, and doing what you wanted to do, nobody really looked at this, or he didn't look at it, I don't know what the case is. But it doesn't make any difference, because we already had this discussion about whether that path can be there, whether that crosswalk can be there. And I have to accept the township's legal opinion. I don't think we should accept this town's opinion after reading this, so perhaps, it's an independent. Now, you all know, a, a complaint was made about the actions of the planning commission, and the solicitor at the time, and the hearing, and whether they were correct. I knew that complaint was made, I never knew what you did about it, but I'm proud of what you did about it, because you hired an independent attorney, his name was Ross Andrew, he looked at it, and told you, no, you were okay, and there were a whole bunch of things, it's not my department, but it's pretty good the way to handle that. This is going to generate some, some controversy. I mean, and to call me names, draw some hard things about me, I don't care. This is something needed to be said. I apologize in a sense for saying it, taking so long to say it, because it's an honor to serve here, I love the people, I love people anyway, but I love the people in the township. You served, you treated me well. This needs to be complied with, because I question, if the Kenton Township land trust, or conservancy, or Southern Chester County land conservancy, they're one and the same, by the way. They called, I don't know why, how they changed their name, because they have to go through a process to change their name. They, they tell you when an issue comes up concerning, with these properties, as far as the township goes, they tell you they're a different organization, but they're connected to Kenton Township land trust. They're the same. Their tax identification numbers are the same, and they have been since 2003. So they're the same. They can't change their name again, because they're subject to the board supervisors. Now, we have no records as to what spaces, what open spaces they control, what they've eased, what they've deeded, I mean, anything. So when a property like that comes up, and a couple of them have come up, we can't find the records that actually belong to the township. So, that's why I think, I hate to throw this on you, but unfortunately, something needed to be said, and you're going to need somebody to really carefully look at this, because I personally know we need those records. The site distance issue came up at intersection, and we, we didn't know what the E that said in the crossing over Hellendale Road. The property owner himself said, I didn't know that was going there like that. And we can't say whether he's right or wrong. He's talking to us, but we can't say whether he's right or wrong. There are public records under this, because this says they have to comply with the Sunshine Law, therefore, we should be able to get those records. And they all should be here, where anybody who wants to access them can come in and access them. So, been a long night, been a tough meeting.
How do you recommend next step for the board supervisors in this regard, Mike Bates?
I think this is, could be considered a personnel issue, therefore, a legal issue, therefore, can be discussed amongst the three of you privately, and I think you need somebody to look at this, to see that I'm right. If I'm wrong, I'll certainly apologize. But I, right now, it looks like there's no authority for the, whoever operating at Land Trust, to operate, to act in any kind of legal agreement. And I'm kind of wondering, what agreements have they entered into that the township could be subject to? There are all things I can't answer, so I think you need a credible attorney with an excellent reputation, legal field, law enforcement field, whatever, to really examine this issue. It's going to take them some time, and you're going to spend some money, because it's something that has to be done. Hopefully, if we do get that resolved, and the lawyer is of that reputation, and he can show everybody A, B, C, D, at least a dozen aboard, then maybe we can start to get this township back together, and go back to functioning on what we originally intended, and what we still want to achieve.
Thank you very much. And given us a, with your thoughts about it, I'd like to hear.
I've got a short announcement. The Bike Way project successfully put out for bid on the construction inspection services for the Bike Way construction all facilities. On October 24th, we received eight bids. Now, these bids are qualification letters of bids by engineering firms. Back in July, the board executed an agreement with PennDOT at our request, and basically says that this qualification committee with me, Tom Nail, Roger, Lyle, and Bill McGlott, we are reviewing those eight bids, and PennDOT is encouraging us to move expeditions, we to resolve our choice. We're going to meet in early December, and hopefully have four of you at your work sessions first Tuesday and Monday. A recommendation, we would like you to see if you can accept our recommendation, so we can pass that on to PennDOT. We have, and our first bid reduced from eight to three, we're going to study the three more closely, and we will rank the three, and that's what we report to PennDOT, our first, second, and third choices. They go through our, um, material, and then they'll come back, and if everything's fine, then we can decide whether to accept a number one, or do some more due diligence with those three. But that's where that stands. And we would like, uh, action as soon as possible by the board, which that agreement calls for. One reason we would like quick action, we were notified probably two months ago, that they split the project to 2014 and 2013. But then they said, on the other hand, if you get all your things in place, you can likely do it in 2013. So it's completely up in the air, but it's to our advantage to keep on top of the plan and get it in their hands as soon as we can.
Great. Thank you, John. Well, that's good work that you've been doing.
I'm Frank Myers, I'm on the homeowners board at Penn Manor. And you probably don't get it very often, but I'd like to thank you, on behalf of the board, for taking the initiative, um, coming out and getting our roads ready, so we can handle the plowing of the roads this year. We were not expecting you to take the initiative, and we appreciate it, and we wanted to let you know that.
That's very kind of you, if you don't hear that as often.
Probably not. I also do have one question, though. In regards to the Penn Manor developments, obviously, the builder has walked away from the finishing of it. Where do you stand on getting the escrow money to begin?
I'll have to turn that over to you, Mason.
Our attorney is working with the bank's attorney, he's signed the papers, and we should have the money within a couple of weeks. And the plan is, this winter, we went out for a bid to get, um, for plowing, because we don't have the plows for those roads, because of, that they're not finished. So, we have received three bids, and we will hire an independent contractor to plow this year. Start, and, and we've already started on the punch list. Our engineer is going to put the punch list in priority order, of course, finishing the roads is top priority. And once he comes up with priority order, we can only finish the items that are on the escrow list. So, when he comes with the order, he will meet with the board and I, and our roadmaster, and we will go over everything, and we will put it out to bid as a whole package. We do have, the township, as I said earlier, will widen the back entrance.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And the other thing the township's going to be responsible for is making the crosswalk ADA compliant. The, um...
The curving.
The curving. Be compliant, because it wasn't a requirement at the time the plan was approved, but since it's a requirement now, the state will make us put that in.
Thank you very much.
Come again.
Chris Burkett, Williams Blaine. I had brought up in the September meeting, the right to know proceeding that was going on, um, and just wondered if I could get some additional information on it. Um, I think, Mr. Stevens, you had mentioned that there was something about to happen at that time. I think I was interested in how much money the township had spent, uh, in defense of their side of this, and where we stand now. Can I get an update on that?
You may. Please, I can tell you, the amount that her records reflect has been spent. In terms of what the present status is, I continue to have, um, discussions with council on the other side, and we're very close to having the whole matter resolved and set aside. So hopefully, by the time we get to the December meeting, this will be in the past tense.
The supervisor team, meaning, they, they all three have been working on the agreement. Mike and Bob have just received copies of it to review. And Scudder recently had, um, some questions that we answered this morning.
Well, what did you come to know from this right to know proceeding?
Well, since it, since, since we haven't completed the ground rules for how I get to know, I haven't gotten to know anything that was the subject of the appeal taken by the township, to what I won at the state level. Once this whole thing is resolved, then I'll be able to answer that question, when I can go and find out, what I haven't been allowed to do up to this moment. So, I will learn something, but so far, I haven't been given the chance to do it. The door continues to be closed. So, and you should, you should, again, I keep reminding you, that you used the term "the defense of this action." The defense of the action is me. I'm the one that is defending what I won. It was the claim of the township that took the appeal, and that's what's important. Now, I'm not trying to make this adversarial, but it does, it seems that it is. But you're creating, you're creating a, you're using a language that puts this whole thing into the wrong perspective, and that's what I'm speaking to, and the way you're presenting it. Okay?
Yeah, I appreciate the chief's explanation, and I think he does a great job. It, but I'm a little cloudy here. As I understand it, uh, there's an issue with the crossing, something technical. Uh, but then, it kind of evolved into, uh, something deeper, which may be the bailiwick of the township solicitors. So, I asked the supervisors, can you enlighten me, um, as far as that, that part of the conversation, the legal? I mean, is it a civil matter, or is it a criminal matter?
I don't know.
We haven't looked at it.
Yeah.
Right. Well, um, you know.
I can't say anything to you, because I have no foundation on what to venture any comment.
Yeah.
Okay?
So I, I'll remain in that cloud.
That's welcome. Welcome to the cloud.
On a pleasant note, the visuals electronically conducted tonight are so much improved over what we've done in the past. I hope you keep a qualified operator. And also, there's also, you have also a lighting man who, who turns the lights off over the, over the visuals, and Albert, keep coming. But it's so, it's so much nicer to have that. Nice job, Lisa.
Thanks.